Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. Madam Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Yes, council members, just a reminder to state the city-state that you're currently located. Dave Abdallah.
Here in Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Zuhair Abdalhak.
Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Moby Dun.
Here, Wayne County, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Robert Coniston.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Denise Malinowski-Maxwell.
Here, Putten Township, Michigan.
Um, I think. Ray Muscat.
Here, Wayne County, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
And Tom Linsel.
Here in the great city of Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Okay, Madam Chair, you have a quorum. Okay, next, Councilman Linsel, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I think getting it is.
I pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America. And to the public. Stands one nation. Indivisible, free, and justice.
Please be seated. Next, we have oath of office is administered to Mayor Bill Bazey, Clerk, City Clerk Lynn Senya, and Councilman Zuhair Abdalhak for the term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-one. Okay, let's unmute.
Madam Chair.
Club Wiki, yes.
I did take the oath of office in front of a judge Turfey.
Oh, oh, you did?
Yes, I did.
Okay, okay, Madam Chair. Yes, there's something going on?
You actually have to give the fiscal location by stating the county, city, township, or village and state from which he or she is attending. So we also have to have everyone say the county as well.
Okay, I don't believe that's in the things, but. Okay, I will go with it. Will you say the county, Councilman Abdallah?
Wayne County.
Uh, Zuhair Abdalhak.
Wayne County.
And I think everybody else said Wayne County already.
I said Wayne County. I think Tom just said, uh, anyway. I'll leave him running the meeting.
Let's do it again. Moby Dun.
Uh, Wayne County, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Robert Coniston.
Here, uh, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Denise Malinowski-Maxwell.
Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Oh. Uh, Ray Muscat.
Here, uh, Wayne County, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
And Tom Linsel.
Here in the great city of Dearborn Heights, located in Wayne County, Michigan.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum. Thank you. At this time, once again, we will have the oath of office and, um, Judge Plowicki, would you like to do that?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Uh, would you like me to swear in the individuals one at a time? Or collectively?
Whatever you prefer, whatever's easiest.
What's ever best for you.
Let's do everyone then, I guess, at the same time, because there's not a lot of them.
All right. Uh, would the individuals to be sworn in, please raise your right hands.
Let me, where's the mayor? Okay. Okay. So it's really just the mayor and I.
I know there's, there's a council person as well.
I'm sorry, Judge Plowack, can you just let us know that he was sworn in yesterday or previously by Judge Turfey? We did not know that until now.
All right, very well.
Thank you.
You both solemnly swear, that you will support the Constitution of the United States. Please repeat after me.
I, Lynn Senya.
Bill Bazey.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter and Ordinances of the City of Dearborn Heights.
The Charter and Ordinances of Dearborn Heights.
Of Timberland Heights.
And will perform the duties of.
And will perform the duties of clerk.
At your office, uh, to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge Plowack. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have adoption of updated procedures for electronic meetings to include hybrid meetings.
That was. Madam Chair.
Two B.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council, uh, adopt the updated City Council electronic meeting procedures, dated November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, is outlined in two B.
Support. Support by Councilman Baydun, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have agenda approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda for the electronically held regular meeting of November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have approval of minutes. Minutes from the regular meeting of November ninth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Council Chair.
Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the regular meeting of November ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, as outlined in item four A.
Support.
Support. Support by Councilman Baydun, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have public hearing and comment on agenda items. There is a two-minute limit. You need to state your name and your city. I see none. Let's move on. Next, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve current claim six-one through six-twenty-seven as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdallah, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have consideration of bids. This is for City Engineer Deb, request for bids for renovation of Police Dispatch Center Design Services.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the request for proposal, RFP, for the renovation of the Police Dispatch Center. This RFP is for design services only, as outlined in item seven A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Who is this? Okay, Councilman Abdallah.
Uh, just a quick, uh, two questions for Director Deeb. And I assume he's in. Is that correct? Yep, there he is.
There, okay, let's.
The first question, because I, because I've been through, um, um, our dispatch center in Dearborn Heights, and it is on the smaller end. I've also been through Dearborn's and McCombs', and those are obviously quite a bit larger, but I do know that Dearborn's is a combined dispatch. But the one that we have seems to be on the smaller side. Are we going to be the same exact spot? And, and you feel, or does the police department and their experiences feel that that's going to be enough size? That's the first question. And I'll let you answer that. Now, I'll, I'll ask the second question. Now, I'm not sure if maybe the police chief wants to answer this one, because it seems to be on the smaller side, honestly.
Right, so, so before we, before we put this, uh, RFP together, uh, I had a walkthrough, a detailed walkthrough with the police chief of the facility, and, uh, recognizing the limitations, uh, I believe we should be able to do what we, what the police want in the, in the space we have. So it is doable. That's what I.
Okay, excellent. And the second question I had, and a lot of the different designs that were in the packet, um, the, the only one that was, uh, less than two million was the one in Detroit for Homeland Security in Detroit. Everything else was obviously quite a bit, but it was also obviously quite a bit larger. Do you have a particular budget in mind as far as how much we are looking to spend on something like this?
Um, I don't, um, but this is gonna, we're gonna go through this. An engineer's estimate will be developed as part of the, uh, RFP. So this is design services, and there will be many options that we have to consider and present to the council for approval. So that will be part of the design. Now, if there is a preset budget, I will have to ask the chief to, uh, address that. I'm not aware of any.
Well, the, the reason I'm bringing that up, because if you looked at all the other ones, they were all quite a bit more. I mean, not more, it was quite a bit more. I mean, we're talking about twenty million, fifteen million, et cetera, et cetera. And I do know that obviously we have budget constraints in, in our case. We're not your typical city that has, uh, crazy amount of money to play with. So with that being the case, I was just thinking, uh, at the time, I was going through this, that we probably should put to the design, whoever's going to be doing the design, some sort of a parameter, like within five million. Because as you know, you could build something within five million, you could build it within twenty, you could build it within a hundred million.
So the main advantage of doing, doing it this way, Council, uh, Protown, uh, is that, that we will develop, as we go along through the design process, we will develop an engineer's estimate that will give us a pretty good idea what the cost will be if we go out to bid. So that was the main reason for doing that, a design bid built as opposed to a design built. So this will give us a, this will give us a good handle on whatever options we decide during the design phase, uh, to keep a, a, a handle on the cost. So we'll, we'll, we'll be back to, uh, council for presentation prior to award anyway. So this will be for the design, and we'll come back to you with sketches that will show you what we have in mind and what the engineer's estimate will be.
Proximal price. Okay, thank you very much, Ali. Appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Madam Chair.
Questions before we vote on this?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdalhak.
Yeah, I believe we did talk about less than a million dollars for this project, around eight hundred thousand, if I'm not mistaken. That was the proposed budget for this project. So I hope the engineer deep keeps that in mind.
Okay. Not a problem.
Thank you.
Well, uh, uh, Councilman, was it eight hundred? I'm, I don't remember.
We talked about, yeah, we talked about around eight hundred thousand for the whole thing, for the equipment, for renovation, and everything else.
So that was design and construction, Councilman?
Yes, that's the number we talked about, and I hope if you need more money, you come back to the city council.
Will do.
So there is no millions of dollars for this project as, as far as I know.
Okay. Hey, any further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, under reports from there, we have, have the Board of Review Appointments and Reappointments.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral appointments of Jennifer Gross and Dana Parrish to the Board of Review. Terms to expire January two thousand and twenty-four. Ms. Gross's appointment to replace Hassan Ahmad, who was recently elected to City Council, and Mr. Parrish's appointment is to replace James Rulo. In addition, City Council concur with the reappointments of Dennis Sabota and Ali Char, terms to expire in January two thousand and twenty-five. Furthermore, remove Christine Sullivan Rathwell and Frank Mathis from the Board of Reviews record as outlined in eight A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdallah, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Council Chair.
Okay, we're voting, Councilman.
I know there was. Councilman Abdallah had a question.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's just a quick statement, uh, Council Chair. Just wanted to tell you, I, I looked at through some of the people that are being appointed, and they're pretty good. In my opinion, they're pretty good appointees, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Any further discussion before we vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have approval to dispose of equipment.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that we concur with Mayor Bazey and approve the disposal of the, uh, following items from the break room at City Hall. Two couches, one TV stand, one TV, one chair, two tables, and one area rug. As outlined in eight B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I, I have a question for our Council, uh, Miyaki, or if the mayor would like to answer this. And, and I'm gonna tell you honestly, I've always found it kind of silly for us as a body to be voting on getting rid of a table and a chair, you know, you know, a TV stand. I mean, think about it, just logically. You know, for us as a body, as a council, to vote, all seven of us, on getting rid of a TV stand, it just sounds almost, I don't know, it just doesn't make sense to me. It seems like something like that should be left to the administration to look, okay, yeah, let's get rid of it and get rid of it. Why do we have this in place? It just sounds so crazy every time we vote on this. So I'm not sure if the mayor wants to answer this, or maybe Gary Miyaki.
Madam Chair.
Who wants to answer it?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdalhak.
I agree with, uh, Councilman Abdallah, because those are under fifteen hundred dollars, and it is in the discretion of the administration to do so. So I think, uh, those should be handled by the administration from now on, if they are less than that amount.
Council Chair.
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman Muscat.
Well, the problem is, is if we allow tables and chairs, uh, uh, you know, is, is something going to slip through the crack like trucks and, and things of that nature? Uh, even though the truck may be worth six hundred bucks, we still have to be, you know, there's still equipment, it's still property that belongs to the city, and it's property. We're in charge of that also, so I, I believe we should just leave it along the way it is. Because things are going to get screwy. Somewhere along the line, something's going to get screwed up.
Yep.
Yep.
Go ahead, please.
Seen that in the past where somebody said that they were in charge of all the stuff at city, and they can do what they want, move things around, but let's not go there, please.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
But, but Council Chair, but at the same time, I move it, you know, okay, I mean, I get what you're saying, Councilman Muscat, but at the same time for us to vote on a, you know, forty-five-year-old TV stand.
It's just. My, my thought is that if council voted to purchase it, they should vote to dispose of it. Could be a rule of thumb.
I respectfully disagree, but I will go by democracy. Thank you.
Mr. Miyaki.
Uh, Mayor Bazey's next.
Okay, I was gonna say, whatever that council wishes, you know, we can do, we can, we can supply you a list if we decide to dispose anything, you know, under fifteen hundred bucks, you know, we can do that. So whatever the council wants, I'm just trying to be transparent by letting you guys know when we dispose anything that you guys are aware. And, yeah, some of these items might not have been purchased under council, uh, if they're under fifteen hundred, obviously. So I think Mr. Miyaki probably can chime in.
If, if I may, uh, Council Chair. Uh, the only concern, obviously, with coming up with a rule in terms of valuations, especially with regard to property that doesn't have a clear value, then you are going to potentially have an issue with respect to whether or not it is at that value. So it usually be prudent, especially if you have a list of property, to just take care of it by virtue of a vote, and then everyone is clear that it was disposed of with the knowledge of the council, and yeah, that, okay, fair enough. Thank you.
I agree.
At this time, is there any further discussion before we vote on this?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
Well, yeah, I agree. It's, it, it may be more trouble to set a value and then say, okay, anything under this amount, we won't, uh, approve, but it's city property, and I think the key is what the used property is worth, and it, I think it takes more time to value it and then to just put it on the agenda to prove it.
Okay, at this time, let's take a vote on this. We're getting too far off base here.
I just have a quick question, Council Chair.
Okay, because we're, we're just, we're discussing this for ten minutes when we could have voted and been done with it.
We could have voted on twenty.
Same thing.
I, I have a question, Council Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, my question is, can we donate any of these, uh, things that we're going to be dispositing of? Can we, you know, can somebody use the, can we send it over to Zaman International or the Amity Foundation or anything?
They're shaking their heads no.
If, if you seen a mo, we went through the basement and stuff is horrible, horrible stuff.
This, okay.
We talked before, donate.
Okay, at this time, let's take a vote and move on. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, for reports from city officials, we have City Engineer Deeb, transfer of funds.
Council.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the transfer of three million, one hundred nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirteen cents from the bond proceeds bank account to the water operations account in an order to reimburse the funds paid from the Water Operations Fund for the projects that are financed by the two thousand and twenty-one bond proceeds. In addition, authorize the transfer, the treasurer, to transfer the funds outlined in nine A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have Grants and Budget Compliance Director Jamal, Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, MIDC Grant.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council accept the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission grant number two zero two-two dash eighty-four for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two in the amount of two hundred thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars, and authorize the controller to sign the agreement. Furthermore, authorize the controller to increase the following general ledger accounts. MIDC Grant Revenue, uh, number two six zero, et cetera, by one hundred and ninety, four hundred and fifty-one thousand and dollars and fifteen cents. MIDC Legal Fees, two six zero, one three zero, eight four eight, point one three O by a hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars, and District Court Contractual Services, one oh one dash one three zero, eight oh four, zero 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 by nine thousand, seven hundred, thirty-five dollars and ten cents. In addition, authorize the mayor and the controller to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment in an amount not to exceed nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and ten cents from account one oh one, one three zero, eight oh four, and no more than a hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifteen cents from account two six zero, one three zero, eight four eight, one three zero, as outlined in nine B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, this is being done at the district courts all over the state, because they're trying to have people, especially those in custody, plead and resolve their case right at the initial arraignment, and the court assigns attorneys to meet with the defendants, and it's, it's a very good idea. It'll save the city a lot of money.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion before we vote on this?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdalhak.
Okay, I did bring this subject before, and this is a controller issue. It's not Mr. Jamal, but I thank him for bringing it up. Can he tell us how much we have left from last year in this account? To my knowledge, we have eighty-six thousand dollars left from last year account. And I don't know if the state going to give us hundred and ninety or only hundred and four thousand, because.
Let's have him. He's ready to answer. Let's answer briefly, please. Go ahead.
Was the question for Mr. Jamal or for me?
For you or him, anybody who wants to answer, I'm willing to.
I mean, I.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. John.
Okay, I mean, the whole issue with this, uh, we passed it through City Council to approve the amount that was approved last year, and then, uh, we got the grant numbers, so, um, uh, Councilman Abdalhak requested that we change the amounts approved to the number of the actual grant that's come in, uh, which in my understanding is the hundred and ninety thousand dollars that you see on this, uh, on this motion, and then, um, so, i- if the, the money left over, I don't believe has anything to do with the grant coming in, but I could check on that with you. I don't have the paperwork with me right now. I'm sitting at home, so.
Not, not to be very testy with you, but you know, just moving the number from last year to this year is the, to start with is wrong.
Okay, so a question, because what.
Question is, I want to make sure that you are putting in the budget when you bring it to the city council, the right numbers, not numbers from last year.
Council, with all due respect, we didn't get a number until after we, we created the budget. So the budget was an estimate. Once we got the correct numbers, when you made the request to change it.
I had the number one week before I brought it to you, with my respect to you. If you didn't get it before me, you know, I, I don't know, but I, I will, I just want you to make sure that the state is going to give us the hundred and ninety, not hundred and four, because we have eighty-six left from last year.
Okay, I mean, I can check on that, or Mr. Jamal can answer you if, since he brought the proposal.
If Mr. Jamal can, can answer, I would be happy to hear him.
Okay.
Uh, yes, we will, uh, we will receive both.
You, you will receive hundred and ninety thousand, Mr. Jamal?
Uh, yes, according to the agreement, that's our allotment, and it's up to the state to allocate whatever they feel uh, after evaluation, and that's done in the past through the court administration. Right now, it will be done through the treasure, through the control department, because of the new law, uh, that a third party now control the allocations. There's no more of the ones who spent approved, so there is a line of demarcation uh, because of conflict offenders.
Thank, thank you.
Just so we're clear, you're talking about like the actual administration of the grant, uh, you know, requesting money for reimbursement for the different attorneys involved in that, but that's, that's what we're talking about. There needs to be a third party involved in bringing up a grant into the city.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's more of a question to, uh, the court administration, uh, which is, uh, Ms. Atkins. Uh, she is, uh, the one who who understand all this. I defer that to her, even though I know, but I, I prefer that she will answer that.
She was the person administering the grant before.
Corporate Council Miyaki, they are directing the question to you. Do you have something to, more to say on this?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, please.
Basically, yes, court administrator would be the one who would be able to answer the question. When the MIDC uh, arraignments were instituted, uh, basically you'll see that there's a billing on my, um, whenever I do these. Uh, it was a program that was instituted. I had to be involved as corporation counsel on behalf of the city as the administrative control unit for the twentieth district court. In essence, all of these amounts in terms of grants are intended to reimburse uh, the court and/or the city with respect to the costs that are actually going to be anticipated. So whatever the amount is, is based on an estimate and is not just money that the city can use for any other purpose. And if you, if you need further answers on this question, it would seem to me that court administrator Atkins would be the one who'd be able to answer them, but essentially, the amounts are based on estimates of the costs that were anticipated to be borne by the court in administering this new program that's been required by the state. Thank you.
Question before we vote on this? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have Grants and Budget Compliance Director Jamal. The FEMA PDMC two thousand and sixteen grant change order number one for residential home demolition of two four zero seven seven, two four three three nine, two four one one one, and two four one two seven Courier.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the FEMA PDMC two thousand and sixteen grant change order number one for residential home demolition at two four zero seven seven, two four three three nine, two four one one one, and two four one two seven Courier Street in the amount of six thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. That will increase the total demolition contract to fifty-two thousand, four hundred and nineteen. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and.
Furthermore, authorize the mayor and controller to sign the warrants and the treasurer. To issue payment in the amount not to exceed fifty two thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars is outlined in item nine C.
For my councilman Coniston, is there any discussion?
Yes, council chair, I have a question.
Councilman Baydun, go ahead, please.
So to our compliance director San Jamal, thank you so much for everything that you're doing here. I've had a resident reach out to me. Um, several times the past week telling me about how they need to have their home purchased and they want out of their home. Um, for the residents that are at home that are watching, can you just give us a brief breakdown on how somebody applies for this and how we determine which home we do purchase? Um, so that the residents at home can understand this and so that I can probably go back and explain this to one of the constituents, please.
Go ahead.
I I will defer the mayor's and I think the mayor. Is very familiar with this program, so I will allow the mayor to answer.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, council chair. Thank you, councilman Baydun. Um, so we actually posted it several times. We announced it uh, several times that uh, anybody in a flood. Flood area, they can call the city hall, they can stop stop by and there's a form that they have to fill out. And uh, it depends on uh, which area with the grants is uh, is at. Then uh, they qualify for certain grants with whichever area that uh. That they apply, like say, for example, if it's Hanover versus Courier. So there's different grants for, you know, different areas. So they can still come and fill out the application even though uh, that they're not eligible yet. You know, when it opens up for different grants, Mister Jamal applied for several brands. And we're hoping that uh, most of these homes around the Ekor's Creek will be purchased. But you can let your resident, anybody that calls you, they can come to the city hall anytime and fill out a form. Uh, that they're interested in uh, having uh, their their home be sold or be purchased.
So I just wanna just, I'm just gonna reiterate on what the resident has actually told me, Mayor, and I am gonna send them your way. Uh, and just verbatim, four thirty two thousand nineteen, I had five feet of water in my basement. And I've reached out to the city several times. Everybody has been giving me the runaround. Uh, so be sure that I will see you tomorrow in your office.
Well, they they can come, we'll just look at uh, where their home is to see if they qualify and. Was if they have their form on file, then we'll just keep that. If not, we'll make sure they fill out a form.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I appreciate you.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Before we vote on this. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The ayes, pardon? Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have ordinance enforcement and animal control director dish room enterprise enterprise fleet management lease renewal.
Council chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the proposed lease renewal from fleet. From enterprise fleet management for seven new twenty twenty two Ford Escape vehicles for the ordinance department. In addition, authorize the mayor to sign the lease agreement on behalf of the city. Furthermore, authorize the mayor controller. To sign the necessary warrants and a treasurer to issue payment as outlined in nine D.
For my councilman Coniston, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Um, I spoke with the with director Dishroom about this and I looked into it and then, you know, and I made. A bunch of calls to different people that could be possibly involved with this, uh, even on the outside of uh, city hall. You know, I I I think I have a better idea. So basically, the concept here in this particular case is we're gonna get out of the leases early. And then get seven new cars, seven new two thousand twenty two Ford Escapes. I have another option, um, that I think should be looked into. The buyouts on these, and I spoke with director Dishroom and we even looked into it with uh, fleet management uh, director uh, Mike Hulswith. I hope I didn't pronounce his name right. But the buyouts on each and every one of these is somewhere in the ballpark, anywhere between seventy seven hundred to around seventy eight hundred dollars each. Instead, I'd like to possibly recommend, at least it's very minimal, it should be looked into. If we buy each and every one of these cars at seventy eight hundred dollars apiece. And then we will outright own these cars or these SUVs now. The concern that uh, director Bill Dishroom had is that the warranties on these would end. With most car dealerships, and it should be looked into with this particular uh, fleet plan. Um, you could buy an extended warranty, so as long as you're still within the warranty period, which in this case you are. You could buy the extended warranty, as a matter of fact, I'm very familiar with somebody that did that. Buy the extended warranty and continue with the warranty for another three, four, five years. Meanwhile, we'll buy seven cars for forty nine thousand and own these cars outright. For the rest, depends on how long we're gonna be able to use them, and then after that, pass them down like we've done in the past. To other department heads that maybe don't need as, you know, nice and new and cute and shiny car. I know everyone would love to have a new car and I'm sure that, you know, um, director Dishroom did his due diligence, but I'm just throwing out there. Another idea that I think would be better off and 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 would save us some money.
I love that idea. That's actually, I think that's an incredible idea.
Council chair.
The Muscat, go ahead, please.
You know, I I'm very familiar with extended warranties after the fact when a car is bought and it's considered used. It is not the same as a new car warranty. You may, you may think it is, but there's a lot of things that are not covered. That things go wrong. I happen to know that because it's happened to me on more than one occasion. Number two, we we approve these things. Previously for the ordinance department and from other departments really. Because of the wear and tear on the vehicles. Yeah, you have to pay them down. But now you've still gotta do your oil changes, you still gotta do your tires, you still gotta do your brakes. Right now, we're not doing anything to these vehicles. We just drive them, put gas in it and drive them. And I think that's what saves us the money is later on down the road, we're not putting front ends and rear ends and. Uh, radiators and alternators, even though they may, it may or may not be covered. It's still a better way to go through this leasing process, okay, because it does save us money. Okay, in the long run, and uh, uh, we went through this, I I believe when we when we first did this. About three or four years ago. Uh, and and we looked at all of the numbers and and we did save money on those vehicles.
Uh, council chair, this is why I respectfully disagree, councilman. I'm gonna tell you why I'm saying that. So if you look at these, um, this will be on page. I have to uh, well, it's one of the last pages. I don't know if you can see it's on this page, okay? Each and every one of these cars, in addition to having a buyout of around seventy seven hundred dollars, each and every one of these cars had fifteen thousand. Here, I'll tell you the exact mileage on them, fifteen thousand, nineteen thousand, twenty one thousand, twenty one thousand, twenty four thousand. Twenty six thousand and twenty six or twenty eight thousand, it's hard to read the last number. So these had pretty low mileage and then even looking at these cars, they're in pretty good shape. And again, I'm not saying this is the end all, but I really think this should have another further next level assessment. By expertise in that field. I'm not an expert in that field. I'm using some what I consider common sense. That I think it's something to consider to do that. Buy these out and keep them for the two, three, four years. That would save us, if you take the monthly payment on these, for the new cars are three hundred and thirty dollars apiece. So if we get three hundred and thirty dollars apiece, you multiply it by twelve, that comes out to give or take almost four thousand, four thousand some change. Per car. And you take that four thousand some change per car, multiply that by seven. Now you got twenty eight thousand dollars that you can be paying out in just one year. But then instead of paying twenty eight thousand dollars in just one year, you instead pay forty nine thousand. Which is an extra twelve, whatever it is, I don't know, ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. Now you're keeping these cars with very low mileage of fifteen thousand. I'm just telling you, I'm not the expert in this field, but this is something that should be. Thought out and just given another consideration before we buy all seven new cars. I mean, you think of the savings for for the, you you're you're buying them out for an extra ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. But you're buying out all seven cars. Something to consider, if at the very minimal. For administration, maybe use these cars, buy them out and use these cars for other uh, departments instead of keeping the old.
But then you give the liability of the maintenance.
But I mean, but how many, how much maintenance do you got? I mean, how much?
Well, how much do you have on your vehicle, councilman? You got a lot of maintenance on a car. There's a lot of maintenance on a vehicle to keep a fleet.
But there's an extended, but there's an extended warranty and and look, I respect what you said.
That costs about fifteen hundred dollars a car to get a good warranty. To get a good warranty and it doesn't cover everything a new car gets. I know this stuff. I can guarantee you, because I bought Ford warranties in the past through Ford Motor Company. Okay? And then you you and and it's not, you drop the car off, it's free. You have a deductible to pay.
Alright, my source has told me, my sources told me it's pretty good. I think it ought to be looked into. That's all I'm saying. Let's look into it to the next level.
Point of order, at this point, with all due respect, we do have a motion on the table we need to vote on.
Real quick question.
Go ahead, councilman Wenzel.
There was a statement made that this is an early buyout, early lease end. Whenever we're doing this before the lease end.
They end in May, they end in May, so they're in an early buyout. We they they they're giving us up to November thirtieth to to be able to, you know, use this program up to November thirtieth. And look, I'm making it clear, I'm sure everybody means well. I'm not saying anybody means wrong. I'm just giving you another idea to just think about.
Councilman Baydun.
Uh, council chair, I just wanna kind of uh, throw out some more numbers. If we're doing the numbers that councilman Dave Abdullah on a two-year lease, that's fifty five thousand four hundred and forty dollars, to be exact. Um, which is, I believe, an additional eight thousand dollars, nine thousand dollars if we were to not purchase these. Me personally, I think that's, I I think that's a, that 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 right there is why we have, you know, us as council members being on here. To really, really look into this. I I would love to ask our administration just to look into it. And if it doesn't, if it doesn't, if not fiscally responsible, we'll bring it back on and we can make a vote on that.
Okay, we're gonna, the mayor had his hand up. Normally, I wouldn't. Address, but since you've asked, go ahead.
Uh, I wanna address, um, I do agree with councilman Muscat, uh, Muscat and uh, just uh, um, councilman Protham Abdullah. So I talk about the warranty. I've actually looked at it, you know, for other other vehicles. Uh, you can't get obviously uh, out of the dealer, when you get a brand new car. You're gonna, you have to pay a certain amount, usually about, you know, two thousand dollars or so to have an extended warranty with zero mileage on your vehicle. Uh, however, when when there's uh, mileage on the vehicle. I don't wanna quote a number, but it's gonna be more than double the number for warranty and as councilman Muscat. I mentioned, you know, from the automotive, I mean, from being an engineer and also been involved with uh, a lot of warranty issues that we've had. You know, from my previous job. Um, the. These these cars, these miles are on it, you know, they might be low miles, but those are hard miles. We call them very, very hard miles and because they're sitting idle a lot of times and they're just going. A certain speed, they're not going to uh, they're not, you're not going on the freeway, so there are just uh, local miles. So those are very hard miles on these vehicles. So, um, and also the other thing with warranty. Just because you get an extended warranty on something like this, so these will be considered used car warranty, not the new car warranty. So those are high deductible, so sometimes the deductible alone is like probably like a quarter percent. Of what the actual bill is for the vehicle. And the the warranty doesn't cover a lot of things, so it would might just, the extended warranty will cover the powertrain. But it might not cover electrical, so the electrical is gonna be extra. So the extended warranty is a good idea when you purchase a brand new vehicle. But not when you have uh, an existing vehicle that is used. So you can't go back to get the same warranty as you would when you purchase a brand new. And like, you know, as I mentioned, these are hard miles on these vehicles. And uh, there's a, there's a deal that this company gave us, you know, it has to be uh, be uh. Uh, I wasn't part of the negotiation, you know, with my chief of staff and also Mister Dishroom. But uh, the end of this month, uh, November, uh, because these vehicles, we're not gonna purchase them right away. They have to be ordered. And it's gonna be a few months before we even get them. I believe it's five, six months from now, but it have to be ordered by the end of the month.
Thank you. At this time, we do have a motion on the table. Let's take a vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Roll call, councilman Muscat. Councilman Coniston. Councilman Abdallah. Malanowski Maxwell, yes. Abdullah. Councilman Baydun. Councilman Wenzel. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is ordinance and enforcement. Ordinance enforcement and animal control director Dishroom approval to dispose of equipment.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the, wait a minute. We're on nine D, correct? Nine E?
Nine E.
We're on nine E.
He is an idiot, that the Dearborn Heights City Council proved the disposal of six. Vitale fifty three twenty iPhones that are no longer functioning. And have been replaced in the ordinance department is outlined in nine E.
Supported by councilman Baydun, is there any questions? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have police chief Myers purchase and payment of police one training academy subscription. Councilman Muscat.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the per- purchase of the police one training academy subscription. From Lexipool in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and sixty four dollars. In addition, authorize the mayor and controller to sign the warrant and a treasurer to issue payment. From the police training account one oh one. Three hundred that's nine six two point zero 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 as outlined in nine F.
For by councilman Baydun, is there any questions? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have police chief Myers purchase and payment of speed measurement signs.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of five solar powered speed measurement signs. From Elan City's Evolus Radar Speed Signs in amount of thirteen thousand six hundred and forty two dollars and fifty cents. In addition, authorize the mayor and controller to sign the warrant and the treasurer to issue payment. From the J A G grant funds one zero one dash three zero zero dash nine eight one point zero five six is outlined in item nine G.
For by councilman Muscat, is there any questions? All those in favor say, pardon?
I got a question, real quick question for these. Do we have any speed uh, radars already in the city?
So, um, if hopefully you can hear me, uh, council chair and uh, councilman. So, I wanna be clear, are you talking about these types of signs? These types of signs, no. Do we have radar units? Yeah, we have units in cars, we have handheld units, so if you're. I wanna be clear, we do have radar units, but the speed reading signs that you're talking about. The LED, the ones that say thank you for going the speed limit or slow down when you're going too fast, no, these will be the first ones we deploy.
Awesome, and now the where do we, where do we plan on distributing these?
Where do we know? I don't wanna lock in anything, cuz everybody's wants to win that lottery, uh, of where these are gonna go and what neighborhood. Um, traditionally, stop signs and things like that are the deterrents inside of neighborhoods. Signs like these are for roadways that have extended stretches uh, without traffic control devices. So Ann Arbor Trail would be a prime example in front of some of the schools. Um, that we want people to recognize what's going on. Obviously, we had the one in front of Riverside, it's closed right now. That they were able to change um, during school days on Beach Daily, if you remember that. So we do have one deployed there, uh, but that's a little different. Um, so there's a couple places that the traffic division is looking into. Uh, obviously, we we only have a finite amount. Um, but those are traditionally where they go. If you look at our, one of our neighboring cities. Westland has them going down that stretch of Ann Arbor Trail, cuz it's a low speed road. Uh, but um, without any type of traffic control devices, our Ann Arbor Trail is the same. Um, so there's a couple places we're looking at in the south. So, no, these will be perfect, permanent fixed ones. Um, I'm sure you could, but it'll come with a cost.
Okay. These are permanent. Okay, and if we wanted to purchase more and we see that they uh, they're working, I'd I'd love to see uh. You know, I, how how do we get data out of this?
Uh, it all, they, they all download them all. It's like a Bluetooth connection, Wi-Fi connection. We can download the data that comes out of them.
Thank you.
Question before we vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Myers, budget amendment.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the comptroller to amend the general ledger account and increase the J Grant Purchase Account one oh one dash three zero zero nine eight one point zero five six by thirteen thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents. And decrease the capital outlet account one oh one, three hundred, nine one eight zero 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 by thirteen thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents. This is for the purchase of five solar powered radar speed measurement signs as outlined in nine H.
Support.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Myers, rescind Council Motion two one dash five four six. That's for purchase and payment of a license plate readers.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I moved it to Dearborn Heights City Council, rescind Council Motion twenty-one dash five four six and approve the purchase of five license plate readers from Flock Falcon in the amount of twelve thousand, five hundred. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign the warrants upon receipt and the treasurer to issue payment from JAG Grant Account Number one oh one, three hundred dash nine eight one point zero five six. Furthermore, approve the service agreement from Flock Safety and authorize the mayor clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city, subject to review by Corporation Council as outlined in nine I.
Support.
Support.
Support by Councilman Badu. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair, one more for the Chief of Police while he's, while we got his face on the screen.
Councilman Badu, question?
So my question is, so you know, this got brought up and you know, many people from within the city kind of reached out to me and wanted to get a little bit more information. People were, you know, kind of saying it's, you know, is this illegal? Is, is this intruding in our community? And so, you know, I tried to explain that this is strictly just a license plate reader, nothing else. Uh, but maybe for the residents at home, maybe our Chief of Police can go ahead and just kind of explain that and kind of put an ease to, to some of the residents at home that who will most likely be watching and wanting to hear and, you know, what, what these really do and what they are. And are these going to be on top of light poles? Are they going to be on, on the vehicles for the police cars?
So what I would do is I would, um, we've already, so you know, this is a recent of something that we've already approved. Um, to hear a full explanation that I go kind of over in detail, I would watch the YouTube video of that, of last meeting because it kind of touches on all those bases. Short answer, no, it is not an invasion of privacy. It's the same information that we would glean if we were standing on a corner. Um, it does not take pictures of people as in cars. But I, I would definitely encourage them to watch the last council session because I give a really in-depth explanation of it.
Okay, and then.
Does that help you?
Yep, yep, yep. And then my next thing to you is, is this going to be on the actual vehicles? Are they going to be on streetlights?
So we, we went through this on the last one too. Um, they'll be stationary. Um, and no, I won't tell you where we're going to put them or what they look like because we, the whole purpose is so we're collecting um, that so we can help prevent crime or deter crime or solve crime.
Thank you. Okay, any further questions before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Myers to rescind Council Motion two one dash five four seven and budget amendment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council rescind Council Motion twenty-one, five, four, seven and authorize a compt- comptroller to amend the general ledger count and increase the JAG Grant Purchase Account one oh one dash three hundred dash nine eight one point zero five six by twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. And decrease the capital outlet account one oh one dash three hundred dash nine one eight point zero 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 by twelve thousand, five hundred. This is for the purchase of the five license plate readers as outlined in nine J.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any questions in regards to this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under new business, this is the business license renewal for Liver Noise Motorsports and Engineering located at two five zero zero South Gully.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council renewed the business license for Liver Noise Sports and Engineering at twenty-five hundred South Gully is outlined in thirteen A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Badu. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have comments from council members.
Council Chair.
I have Councilman Wenzel first. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving to uh, my fellow council members and uh, all the residents of Dearborn Heights. Have a safe and blessed Thanksgiving. And I'd like to also say on behalf of myself, and I'm sure all the council members, our prayers go out to Ray Muscat and his family who are going through a very sad time now with his mother. I won't elaborate anymore on that. Um, our prayers are with you, Ray. And um, I would like, I just, I just purchased a lease vehicle. I, I, I leased a F one fifty for two years and I bought it out. And when I bought the vehicle, it had a five year, or five or six year one hundred thousand mile bumper to bumper warranty. And when you purchase it, the warranty goes along with the vehicle. It's a bumper to bumper warranty. I think we should look into this for future lease end situations. Because sometimes I know I might talk to my salesman, sometimes it's beneficial to, to buy it and sometimes it's not. So I think each situation is, is unique and we should look into this for, for future uh, for future uh, items that come before us. Thank you, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Muscat.
Uh, number one, uh, you know, we'll go back to the fleet car there. You know, when you buy vehicles, it's always asked, you know, if this is going to be a personal car, business car or fleet cars. Automobile dealers and our automobile companies treat these vehicles much differently than uh, your normal car that you purchase for your stuff. Okay? Uh, once you start using them for business and, and uh, as far as a fleet car, like what, like we do, it, a lot of that changes, but we'll move on. Um, I still haven't, you know, I received uh, some paperwork from our clerk's office on the planning commission. And I read this nineteen-page document. And I have yet to see anywhere in this document where the planning commission gets to make the final decision on approving anything. It's a recommendation to city council. And we have not been getting any recommendations to vote on. And now things are being put out there and being built. And you know, we get, I get calls from residents, what the heck is going on here? Who is allowing all of this stuff? Well, if we're in the blind, how are we going to respond? You know, how are elected officials going to respond to a group of people that are appointed? Okay, I read that nineteen, nineteen-page document. There isn't anything that gives them that authority. The only authority that they have is to give it to us. They review it for us. They make sure everything's all done right and they're have uh, whoever does their planning for them and, and uh, and it comes to us to vote on. So what has happened and who took that away from us? I, I, I believe I asked Mr. Miyake. Uh, and if I did not apologize, but I want our attorney to look into this and get back to us ASAP on this.
Corporate counsel, could you give us an answer on that?
Yes, I was been asked, asking for direction from someone to, who has the authority. Uh, no disrespect meant to Councilman Wenzel or Councilman Muscat, but um, uh, they asked others to basically give me that direction. And if you're giving me that direction now, Council Chair, I will get back to everyone on that.
Yes, let's do it. They seem very concerned.
And I got a few other things, Council Chair, if you bear with me, please.
Go ahead.
Uh, I've had, uh, you know, we go back to the tree issue. We've got a lot of trees that are left untrimmed, uh, sycamore trees that are, are, are shedding everywhere. Um, matter of fact, I was looking outside today and, and kind of embarrassed that I'm watching my neighbor trim his tree. Not his tree, a city tree, because we can't get it trimmed and they can't park their car in their driveway or in the street because it's so bad. And yet we wait for the first week of November to be able to trim these trees and they're not getting trimmed. Um, and, and you know, I had a, a, a resident call me that said that they've gotten estimates to cut down their sycamore tree at almost half of the price that I believe we're paying Dearborn Tree for. And I think we need to start looking out to other companies to find out if we can get these trees, the, the problematic trees uh, cut down or trimmed uh, so we can get a fair price. Uh, you know, go out and, and actually I've got a few uh, phone numbers that I can pass along to the administration, uh, you know, in an email to a, to the mayor, which I can do. And um, uh, you know, and, and a lot of people are asking that the city look into scheduling the street sweeper. So they have an idea of when the street sweepers are coming. Because no one ever has an idea. And I know we only have, I think, two or three sweepers and it costs a lot of money. Uh, but we need to set up some sort of program by for next year. We got some time to do this. So we can do that. The other thing I have, I, I want to continue on is I watch either, I don't know who drops them off, but these utility poles. They come by and drop the utility poles off and just leave them there. I can tell you, there's three that have been, been on Cherry Hill and Rosemary for well over a year. Okay, there's another utility pole at front of Walgreens on Beach Daily Road. It's been there so long, it's already turned black. They just drop them off and either they're forgetting about them or what, but they put them on people's front lawns or on their property, not on city property. I know it's the easement, but we're responsible to take care of that property. And how do you take care of it with a big two or three utility poles on it? So someone from the administration needs to contact whoever, if it's the, the cable companies, the uh, telephone companies or DTE, that they need to start taking care of these. And, and some of these poles, they look like, you know, they put in, they've got so much weight hanging over them. They got twenty-degree and thirty-degree listings on them. So that's one, that's one thing. The other thing I have is when are we going to start putting in the new water meters that we approved with a bond? I mean, we, I don't know if we're holding off, but these water meters aren't going to get any cheaper. We allocated so much money. I think we start buying them and get them in stock so we can put them in. And I'd like for someone to answer that question of when are we going to start doing that? We already got.
Directing that, Councilman, who are you directing that question to?
Yeah, to whomever, uh, DPW or Engineer Ali Deen.
Director Deen, go ahead.
Yes, sir. So, so part of, uh, uh, we do have absolutely, Councilman. We do have the money for uh, the water meter. Um, and but since we're moving on to, from, from an old technology to a new technology, what we were doing is looking at the, we have to do a collection system, meaning that we have to have antenna. These things are going to be read remotely. So we're looking at possible use of remote uh, uh, antenna locations throughout the city. So we had one presentation on the technology for the first meter that we selected and we have two scheduled for December. Um, so um, um, the, the idea is that we wanted to, the end users, our staff from DPW, from the billing department, from the, you know, they're all going to be part of the presentation to make sure that the technology we selected uh, will give us what we want. We're not using the old technology anymore. We're doing remote location, remote read, downloaded data at a different uh, rate. So um, um, the systems we're looking at uh, require uh, collection. So we asked uh, um, uh, the city uh, Corporation Council for a list of um, uh, for the ability to use uh, uh, antenna locations that we have throughout the city. So I don't have to build a new one. I wanted to be able to do a collection system using what we currently have so we can save on the installation cost. Um, but there will be a couple more look, uh, presentations from manufacturers in December. And then after that, we'll put together a package, but we are on track to replace those meters.
I, I just don't want somewhere down the line that we kick this can down the road and say, oh, we got to come back for a budget amendment and get more money because uh, the price tag on everything went up. So I, 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 that's what I want to avoid because that's happened in the past and I don't want to see that happen.
I agree. It's part of the, it's part of the bond money. I, I understand. I have that list in front of me and, and like again, we're moving to a totally different technology now. So I wanted it, uh, uh, we did a survey around the communities that use the new technology to find out if they have any operational issues. And we selected two communities. They have the best systems and that would be Taylor and Dearborn. And then so we're looking at what they have in place. So I don't have to reinvent anything. I just want to make sure that it works for us.
And one more thing, uh, if we can uh, bend the mayor's ears a little bit and city council about uh, cell phones for our directors, our directors only. And you know, it's hard to get a hold of these directors on Friday, uh, Saturday when you have to have them. Uh, I think somebody, somewhere along the line, we got to go back and give our directors uh, cell phones. And just, this is all food for thought here. And I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And I thank Councilman Wenzel for the kind words. I appreciate that, sir. Thank you, Council Chair.
Councilman Badu, you're next.
Thank you, Council Chair. And I'll be brief. First and foremost, uh, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I am praying heavily and hard, really, really hard for our very beloved Councilman Dave Abdullah and a victory for the Detroit Lions. Praying really, really hard for that. Honest to God, the man is heartbroken. He was excited over a tie. We'll give him that. Um, that, that is my first and foremost. Second of all, anybody, I was not in the last council meeting. I was uh, exposed to COVID. I fought it. I'm glad I was vaccinated. I'm glad I am vaccinated. I don't want to get into the whole politics behind getting vaccinated or not. I couldn't care less. Um, so I wasn't at the last city council meeting. I want you to know, I felt like the disconnect from everybody on here. I missed you all dearly. Um, and I also, I also wanted to congratulate our mayor and all of the council members that are going to be serving with us, Nancy Breyer, Hassan Ahmed, Tom Wenzel. Um, and anybody else that I forgot, congratulations to Lynn. Congratulations to our treasurer Lisa X Clayton. Um, I'm, I'm so proud of everybody. Uh, congratulations to uh, Mr. Abdallah as well. And then I also want to speak a little bit about the trees. I, I, I want you to know every morning, the same resident will send me a message and tell me my tree needs to be trimmed. Now let me, I'm going to backtrack here. I want to tell you guys a little bit about what happened here. I reached out to DPW. They said it's a certain kind of tree. You cannot cut it till the summer, till the winter. I said, and, and this was in July. Beautiful. Called back in August. Hey, I just want to confirm, when do you think we can cut this? It has to be cold. Perfect. I waited in August. Here comes September. Hey, weather's starting to get a little close. Let's schedule this to be uh, prepared so that we can trim down the tree. We're going to do it in October. October first comes around. Hey, you know, it's, you know, here comes the Indian summer. It's still warm. You got it. I'm not going to bother you. Here we are November twenty-third. Tomorrow's my anniversary. Three years, by the way, just thought I'd throw that out there. Three years, right? I'm sorry, not three years. Four or five months. The person is still texting me every single morning. It is November twenty-third. Tomorrow I'm going to tell, he's going to tell me happy, happy anniversary. Today's November twenty-fourth. Why isn't my tree trimmed? This is one of maybe twenty. Uh, I understand that we cannot, we don't have the manpower, but I'm begging Ali Deen to come up with maybe finding a way to contract this out with another tree company and use the contacts from uh, Councilman Muscat. That's, I don't have a tree company. I really don't. But if Councilman Muscat has one, please take his, take the numbers and just let's trim the trees, please. It is literally, it's literally like the roads in Dearborn Heights, but let's fix our trees first so we can finally get to the roads. That is my second thing. On Ford Road, and I believe I brought this up to Ali Deen, the administration, the mayor. I know we're working on it. I know there is so much going on, but if you look from where Councilman Dave Abdullah works, it looks beautiful. Literally, hi- hi- his office right there looks great. And then you, then you drive from where it ends where Councilman Dave Abdullah works, all the way to Telegraph. It's so embarrassing because you look across the street, which is Dearborn, and it looks so nice. And I've brought this up, I, I believe it to Ali Deen and, and I've spoken to you about this. Honest to God, there are some parts of the, the weeds that are growing, they're still growing. It's winter. Is it November? It's November twenty-third. They're still growing. It's, it's, it's absurd. Please can we look into that? So Bill Deschamps, Ali Deen, uh, Mr. Conrad, the mayor, please look into that. I'm so embarrassed of it. It's not the business owner's fault. We failed to maintain in the past and I understand that, but we cannot let it to continue to fail that way. Please, I beg you guys. So if we can make a note of that, also to Councilman Muscat, I am so sorry. I will keep it brief. Your family is in our prayers. So if we can make a note of that, also to Councilman Muscat, I am so sorry. I will keep it brief. Your family is in our prayers. You are in our prayers. Um, and with that, I, I go ahead and yield the rest of my time. Thank you guys so much. I was a little passionate, forgive me. Go Lions.
Go blue, go U of M.
Councilman Abdul Hock, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few items to talk about. Sorry, I, I just have gotten over a cold. Uh. First, I want to know from the controller. And the treasurer. Where is the plant Moran audit as, you know? A- a- at this time. Normally we receive the audit report. Early in November and we haven't heard anything. Is there any news when we expect the plant Moran audit?
Okay, I have both the controller and the treasurer unmuted. Who would you like to speak?
I'll go with the controller first and the treasurer.
Okay, um, I mean, anybody who's been to City Hall notices that Plant Moran's been running around and. Pretty much every department heads been running around getting, uh, as much documents and reports in, in place that they can. It's being requested of us. Uh, we're progressing, we're, we're doing pretty well. Uh, Plant Moran, and we're just timed up loose ends, trying to make sure all the books. Are balanced so we can close out the year. Uh, we asked for an extension until. February to submit, Plant Moran requested an, an extension until February to submit their final paperwork. Uh, and but, uh, I mean, we're, we're doing pretty well as far as. Me going through this the first time. So it seems like. Um, you know, uh, we're just waiting on some things from. You know, different department heads and everything, but, but other than that, it's progressing. So and you're free to call me personally if you want to ask me any specifics you want.
No, it's just normally we receive it in November. Is there any delay from any specific department?
Uh, no, it's just in general, a lot of the paperwork and things that we needed. Uh, we started off a little bit late. Uh, we've had a lot of turnover in pretty much all the departments, as you probably know. Uh, so, uh, just organizing everything in the pre audit to get things ready. Uh, took longer this year and, uh, so, you know, but from my understanding, you asked a subjective question. How's it going? And it seems like it's going pretty well. Uh, things are, are, are looking. I'm looking okay, so.
I was, I was, I received copy of the. Finance of the city, the budget basically as of ten thirty-first twenty-one. I received it from my dear friend, uh, Ray Muscat, because I wasn't on the list of distribution.
Oh, I'm sorry. You should.
It's okay. It's okay. It's okay. No, no big deal.
Okay.
Uh. I looked at the bottom, the total revenue and the total expenses. And I see and read over seven and some million dollars in red as of August and then, uh, uh, I believe.
Okay, so just so.
Are we, are we in deficit? We didn't collect enough money as of today? Or those are just numbers there and they going to be corrected?
They're gonna be corrected. Basically what you're seeing, uh, we can't print out a budget report up to date. Uh. Now, what, what you're, what you saw is a budget to activity. And it includes, we still haven't closed out in our system last year's budget. Uh, because they're doing the audit. So once we have everything in balance, we'll close it out, bring it to council for approval. And then you'll see the numbers balanced out to basically the beginning of this fiscal year. So the numbers you're seeing on there, it's not a budget number. It's, uh, it's, it's basically a balance that's remaining, including last year's budget. And then adding this, so it's. I, I explained that in the email as well. So I mean, if you need like more exact numbers, give me a call directly and we can talk about any specifics. You, you have questions about.
Is that treasurer department handing you all the information you need for the audit? Or there is any delay from the treasurer's office?
I think everybody's working hard to try and get the, the information that they need. To the auditors. Uh, you know, I mean, some of the stuff is a little harder to get than others, but. We're all working together and we're a- annoying the heck out of each other, trying to get it in a timely manner. So. You know, we're, we're getting, we're getting the stuff we need.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Controller. I have a question for.
May I, I'm sorry, I'd like to answer that question though, may I?
Yes, do.
You, there was, yeah, you had said the treasurer, the controller, councilman, do you mind? Um, so of course the controller had told you, and this is true, there was an extension requested. The controller's office certainly, um. You know, worked very closely, more so with the auditors and, you know, orchestrating and gathering all the information. I will tell you, the treasurer's office has submitted everything as requested in the timeline that was asked and requested. Including, that's why I'm, he's still here tonight. Because I had a list that was sent to me Thursday after five. So I said, you will get it. I'll be here, even though we had to close the office yesterday because of COVID. And we're down to two staff members. We're still meeting those deadlines, but we are not late with anything worth submitting. And I will also tell you, we are a team. Get, working through this. There's been a lot of challenges. Um, but as you know, the audit is required by state law by December first, which is why. There was an extension letter, uh, from the mayor's office, submit from there to Department of Treasury, I believe, uh, Chief Staff Hernandez. If you have more questions, can answer that. But, um, as a team, everybody, including the department heads, are all working together to get through this because there were, there's honestly a lot of challenges from last fiscal year. And we're working through that. So, and my door is always open. My phone is always available to you.
Thank you, Lisa. You've always been, uh, team player and I thank you for that. Uh, I have a question for, uh, the chairperson. Uh, when did you receive the letter from Mr. Cutner about, uh, forensic audit, Madam Chair?
Let me make my announcement and I'll tell what happened.
Go ahead.
I didn't receive a lot.
You sent some email to. City council members and I got copy from one of the city council members. I did not receive it. Directly from you. And.
Because it was sent to everybody. That one, I, I think I know what you're referencing now. That was back a while ago. But we've got an update. I'll be giving everybody when it's my turn to speak.
Go ahead, go ahead. I'm, I just.
Cause I'm not, I got other people on the list and then I'll speak, but I will tell everybody what's going on. I, I, that was my plans.
The letter was sent on eleven-two and I did not receive a copy and I received the copy from. Uh, Ray, from my dear friend again, Ray Muscat.
Okay, cause you know what? I will take and I will forward to you the copy that I sent to you because everybody was sent one individually.
I did not receive one and that concerned me very much because I'm the one who's asking all these questions. And I am in the dark, not knowing that there was a letter. From Mr. Cutner explaining lots of things. Which could have made my life and everybody's life a lot easier. And saved all of us lots of, you know, argument over.
Right, right. And I did send it to you. I will go back on my emails and I will read forward it to you and I apologize.
I got it. You don't have, you don't have to send it. But there is lots of, uh, information. And I hope that the council will allow me to make it public to the residents so they know what's going on. Uh, and I believe, uh. There was some information that the mayor did. Cooperate with the audit and he did provide them with the information which they asked for. Just to make that clear to all the residents that Mr. Bezzi had provided. The information which they asked for and I didn't see anything in the letter stating otherwise. So I just want the public to know that. And I want to wish everybody happy holidays. And I don't know if I will be in the country. Next meeting for the study session because I will be traveling to Egypt and Lebanon for a few days. So happy holidays, everybody, and I thank you very much for the time you've given me.
Next, we have Councilman Caston.
We couldn't hear your council chair.
Councilman Caston.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, we, I think should maybe appoint a group to, uh. Or the mayor can appoint someone to look the advantages of leasing cars for the city versus zoning. Uh, the cars, possibly the mayor, our controller and our head of compliance, uh, Director Hassan Jamal. Uh. I too want to wish, uh, that, uh. Councilman Ray Muscat's mother, uh, has a speedy recovery or is, is, uh, uh. Stays with us for a while. I remember speaking with her several times when I was the. Annual judge of the Miss Malta contest when Larry Zara was alive and she would be at the. Maltese Club is very nice woman, very proud of her son. Um. The happy birthday to Mary Lawrence. Who worked, uh, many years in the clerk's office. And worked, uh, several years in my law office here. Um, happy twenty-ninth birthday again. And, uh, happy Thanksgiving. I hope everyone has a blessed Thanksgiving, uh, with their family. And, uh, uh, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Corporate Council Miaki. Go ahead, please.
Uh, Council Chair, I was just going to comment on some things that were raised by both Councilman Muscat and Councilman Baydoun. In a little more peripheral way, uh, the mayor and I have discussed this, but it has to do with trees. There was a US Court of Appeals for the Sixth Circuit decision about the Canton tree ordinance. Uh, so we may have to revisit any number of things having to do with our current tree ordinance. And that may allow us to proceed a bit differently, uh, with respect to some of the issues that they have raised. Uh, even though it would not necessarily, uh, affect any sort of issues in terms of us. Hiring in terms of labor, but perhaps there's, uh, other ways to deal with some of these issues. Uh, in terms of the actual property owners, uh, in light of this decision. So I will be, uh, getting back to the council. Um, in the not-too-distant future, again, trees are not something we necessarily consider as much of a. Priority in the middle of the winter, but I just wanted to inform the council, uh, with respect, uh, to that issue. And maybe people can start thinking about our current tree ordinance and what they might want to end up changed in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Chief Myers.
Um, yes, ma'am. I was just waiting for those community announcements.
Okay.
It wasn't to respond to anybody. Thank you.
Right. Well then, before we go to community announcements, I'd like to make a couple announcements. First of all. I've been working with Mark Cutner with the Raymond Group. And we have finally determined he's available on Tuesday, December seventh at six PM. Um, for his financial analysis report. Um, he originally tried to give it back in April, but was refused by someone who really didn't have authority. Um, he asked me to. Please advise everyone that this agreement with their fina- financial analysis is with. City council only and anybody else contacting him outside of city council is not supposed to be doing that. So at this time, we will have him on Tuesday, December seventh at six PM. That's Mark Cutner with the Raymond Group for our financial al- analysis report. And it will be via Zoom. It's going to be a special study session for that, so he can bring us up to speed on what's going on. Okay. And also too, I wanted to ask the mayor on something, um, what is our protocol now for? If somebody comes down with COVID in the city, in the past, we got. Emails and I know Elizabeth Saboda Perry is gone, so is there anybody else that's gonna take that over? To kind of let us know where we're at as far as COVID goes in City Hall?
So we have, we have a new director. When you, you weren't here last, at the last meeting, it was announced we have a new director when you were absent from the last council meeting.
Correct.
Oh, yeah. So we do have a new, uh, HR director. She's online right now. And, uh, we'll do the same thing as, uh, we're sending, uh, emails to all, everybody in the city hall. So if you guys want to be included, we'll make sure that you guys are included as well. So right now.
Cause Elizabeth already did.
Well, anyway, let me finish this. Uh, we, uh, there was an email that was just sent out, you know, recently and, uh, so we're managed, everybody that comes into the city hall, including council members. They're required to wear masks inside the city hall. So just want to make sure that you guys know. So, uh, it doesn't exclude anybody. Anybody that comes into any city building, uh, will have a mask on, uh, for the safety. Of the residents and also the employees that work for the city. But we'll make sure that you guys are included on the future emails.
Also too, it's my understanding that the seniors went on a Mackinac Island trip. And recently, and one of the people on the bus tested positive for COVID. Can you tell me if we have? Um, identified the seniors that went and notified them to get tested?
Well, this is the first I've heard of it, Council Chair. I wish you would have called me earlier. I would have looked into it and would have answered you before this meeting.
Okay, because there's common knowledge around the city.
Well, it's not, I didn't get it. I didn't, I'm not aware of it and nobody from my staff is aware of it. And I wish there was better communication from your part or the council to myself or anybody. Well, I, I refer that to our, our council.
But I would like to see them at least get a hold of those seniors because right after that, there was a senior luncheon where some of those seniors were present. So. You know, our seniors are our most fragile residents and I, we all worry, our numbers are up. That's why we're not. In Riverside Auditorium tonight because the numbers are so high.
And that's why, and that's why we messed up at the City Hall Council Chair. So.
Right.
We're, I'm taking all the precautions from this.
I know you are. You have been.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next we have Treasurer Hicks Clayton.
Oh.
Thank you. I'm waving and trying to, my new sign language better, I would. Um, so I just have three really quick announcements. Um, first of all, thank you, Honorable Councilbody. The mayor, the finance team, everybody, uh, Div Dad for coming together. We live launched today. And it went really well. The ribbon cutting went well and somebody actually did a transaction while they were there. I was a little nervous. Um, but we're pretty, I know it's like this was in my nightmare, was it gonna not work, you know? But it did. And I wanted to let people know that Div Dad is live and you can pay at the kiosk there and we'll put it on the website where all the locations are. We're part of a network. There's over eighty locations, but we do have several in Dearborn Heights. Um, both ends of the city, by the way, so it's very convenient for people. Um, you can also download the app from your app, Apple or whichever, you know, your phone you have service. Um, you can do pay by your app or web-based. And of course you could still come here in person. We're here as well. So I just wanted to share that with you. And again, check our website for the city, uh, the treasurer's page, because we will include all that information. With that, real quick, December first is next Wednesday. And that means winter taxes are being mailed. So I know I should have probably waited till after your Thanksgiving. Um, but yes, so please watch for your winter taxes, your twenty-one tax bill. If you do not receive it by the second week in December, because sometimes things happen. Um, please call us. We'll make sure you get it. Our number is three one three seven nine one three four one zero. And the last thing I have is more of a question for the council. Um, if you recall, when we did the bonds, the twenty-one bond, there's twenty-five million. Um, but there was a question raised about an investment strategy. And so I've been working with Morgan Stanley. And they now have actually sent me all the information. I wanted to see if Councilbody would like a study session to review this or what your preference is. So it's just kind of a general question for you. Or, or I can just email it. No, but I do have the information and I do want you to be.
That would be nice.
A study session? Yep. And then I can bring in Morgan Stanley as well. So if that's what the council's preference is, I just want to be very transparent with you all and make sure you're part of, this is, this is significant. This is twenty-five million. Um, that we have by, actually it's gonna be less than that now because, you know, the money's gonna be, uh, moved to a. uh, moved to a water that's owed to water, but it's still significant and it's over a course of a few years. So you may be interested in that investment strategy. So.
Thank you.
I thank you.
Next, we have Chief Myers.
Yes, thank you, Council Chair. A couple of announcements from the police department and from the fire department in the city as a whole. First, uh, this Saturday, uh, November 27th. Um, we are doing our Stuff a SWAT Truck event and we are doing it this year in conjunction with our friends at Hype Athletic Community. Um, on Warren Avenue down there, uh, between Telegraph and Arbor Trail. And what we're asking is that if anybody would like to come, uh, contribute a new, uh, unused gift for kids between the ages of, uh, zero and 15 years of age, uh, boys and girls to swing by Hype Athletics. And, uh, come see the police department. We'll have our SWAT truck out there. Our goal is to fill up that truck with toys, which will ultimately be, uh, uh, given to the Goodfellows here in Dearborn Heights. So there'd be no child without a Christmas. So we look forward. I know there's a big football game going on at the same time in the state. Um, but, uh, if you could take some time away from that, or if you want to drop it off early, Hype will be open and they'll have some collection bids there for us as well on Saturday, but one to four on Saturday for the Stuff a SWAT Truck, uh, please come out and see us. The next thing would lead into Goodfellows. Uh, Chief Brogan's out here, uh, on the meeting with us. Uh, Dearborn Heights Goodfellows will be out on the corners Friday and Saturday, December 3rd and 4th. So please drive safely around us. Please be generous. Uh, the Goodfellows Newspaper Drive is, uh, one of the, uh, the, the perennial annual events here in the city that is really a big deal for our residents, for our friends, our neighbors. And it's, it's a great way to start off the holiday season. So please be generous, please be safe. And, uh, join us on December 3rd and 4th and please contribute to the Dearborn Heights Goodfellows. So no child will be without a Christmas. And then, uh, finally, um, I don't get to say it often enough to the men and women that work for the police department, but with Thanksgiving, I want to publicly say how appreciative I am of the men and women that work out on the road, that work inside dispatch, our civilian employees, our jailers that work part-time, trying to put themselves through school. So they become law enforcement, um, officers. Um, thank you very much for all they do. Uh, it makes my job a pleasant job, uh, enjoyable job to work with such great people. So thank you all of them. And really to everybody else in the city. Thanks, Happy Thanksgiving and, uh, please be safe this, uh, weekend. So thank you.
Next, we have Mike Blackburn.
Hi, uh, this is a, uh, comment for the Council Chair. Um, December 7th, there actually is the tree lighting cer- ceremony. Uh, maybe somebody from Recreation can, uh, speak, speak on that before you schedule any, uh, meetings on that day.
Ooh, what time's the ceremony?
Ooh, it's right. I don't have it on hand with me right now. Maybe if somebody from the Recreation Department said, meaning they.
I've got her here right now. Go ahead.
We can't hear you.
Your microphone's not on.
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so the tree lighting ceremony is Tuesday, December 7th, um, 6:30 to 9:00 up at Warren Valley Golf Course.
Um, I know Mr. Cutner said he probably would need only about 15 minutes. Would you like me to change it to 5:00 PM on that day?
Yeah.
Let's do. Let's do 5:00 PM. He said he doesn't really have a lot to give us. Or should we try and go Wednesday?
Even better. Wednesday would be a better day.
You know what? That's correct. I will go ahead and get ahold of him and see if December 8th works for him. And I'm sure it will. Um, I'll call him tomorrow.
December 6th.
Yeah. December 8th, which is Wednesday, and I will ask him if we can do it at 6:00 PM via Zoom. Okay. At this time, is there any more public announcements? Can this, go ahead, Katie.
Thank you. Um, so I did want to announce the tree lighting. Um, I think we got that out of the way though, Tuesday, 6:30 PM at Warren Valley Golf Course. Um, I also wanted to thank, um, everybody who came out to our Thanksgiving luncheon last week. Um, Chief Myers, Chief Brogan, uh, Mayor, thank you very much. Um, we had a really great reception. The seniors, um, said they really, really enjoyed all that. Um, and then really quick, I just wanted to, to touch on, on the, the COVID that was brought up. Um, anytime that we were, um, alerted, if anybody testing positive or anything for COVID, we let anybody know, you know, right away and, and make sure that we have a, a safe environment. Um, for everybody. So I just wanted to make sure that, that, that that's, that that's out there and that's pretty clear. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any more public announcements? At this time, we will open it up to public comment. Three minute limit, name, street and city. I don't see any. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Support.
Support by Councilman Conston. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, meeting has ended. Have a happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thanksgiving, everybody.